The Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One Board of Directors Regular Meeting is now in session. The time is 6:00 PM. All the directors are present. We will start with our regular meeting, the regular session, citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The board is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the board at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The board will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the board addressing those items. You may speak up to three minutes, or the time limit determined by the president or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that indicates the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the board has authority. We have one person signed up. Mr. Rose, would you come forward and state your name and address, please?
Bill, I think you'd be better at this by now, with all the practice you've had.
I'm beginning to agree. You wouldn't think PowerPoint would be this difficult.
Mr. Rose, while you're getting ready, as a matter of information, I'd like to point out to you that the Texas Rural Water Association 2014 Rate Study says very clearly that the number of municipalities that are using winter averaging is 11 percent.
Are you waiting for it to open?
Yes.
It's a big file. Seventy-five kilobits.
Open. There we go.
Miguel, does this go through our virus protection program? Miguel?
Miguel, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Does it go through a virus scan before it loads? Do thumb drives go through a virus scan before they load?
I don't actually know.
Okay, Mr. Rose, your time is starting.
Thank you. Bill Rose, 219 Inverness. At the May 20 meeting, I raised the issue of determining sewer charges in a fair and equitable manner. In the months of June, July, August, September, and October, I presented facts surrounding winter average rates during each month's three-minute public comment portion of your meeting. Since the original presentation, this is the sixth time in as many months that winter average rates have been brought to your attention. It must be noted that the issue is yet to be placed on an agenda for discussion and action. This evening, I have a PowerPoint slide for you showing the cost of 19,000 gallons of water and 4,000 gallons of sewer service in the month of July for several entities. My thanks goes to Director Thomas for doing the basic research, which I've incorporated into this slide. Trophy Club MUD-1 is shown in the blue and is slightly to the right of center based on overall cost, which brings me to my first point. On my account statement is a special message. It states, "Thank you for allowing Trophy Club MUD-1 to provide you with clean, safe water and wastewater services for over 30 years at one of the most economical rates in the region." Director Thomas's published work clearly indicates MUD-1 is not one of the most economical providers in the region. Therefore, I would encourage you to remove that statement from your billing system. Also, when I'm talking about, speaking about the account statement, there seems to be a lack of transparency. You tell your customers their water usage, but do not show the usage that they are billed for under sewer costs. Again, looking at the chart, it will be impossible for those watching the video to read the comparison cities, so I'm going to take a moment and read them from left to right. In the green, Grapevine, Seagunville, Haslett, Lake Worth, Saxon, Keller, Bridgeport, Murphy, Fornie, University Park, Mineral Wells, and Decatur. All of the cities in green use winter averaging. In the red, the first is Argyle, then MUD-1 in blue, followed again in red by Southlake, Richland Hills, Prosper, Levon, Terrell, Corinth, Westlake, Midlothian, Everman, and Farmersville. All of the cities in red, just like the cities in green, use winter averaging. That's right. The only entity on this chart that does not use winter averaging is Trophy Club MUD-1. All the cities in red and green use winter averaging, and they're able to pay their bills using that system. Now, here's the real payoff from this chart. When MUD-1 stops overcharging its customers who have lawns, the height of the blue line will decrease, and Trophy Club MUD-1 will move into the left and into the green. I know there's very little time left. I would like to read some more cities that have winter averaging, but I'm not going to take that time this evening. I'll save it for another evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item.
Mr. President, clarification. How many of those towns in the green get their water from Fort Worth? I was just wondering, clarification, how many?
I didn't address source of water.
Okay. Thank you.
Neil, if you go to the chart I prepared, it shows it by town, where every town gets their water, all fifty-some out of them.
Okay. All right, let's move on to our consent agenda. All matters listed as consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Directors and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If the discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Item one, consider and take appropriate action to approve the consent agenda. Item A, October check register. Item B, October 21, 2014, regular meeting minutes. Discussion.
I move to accept the consent agenda. Approve it.
Second?
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. We will now move into our regular session. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the October 2014 financials. Discussion.
For discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve the October 2014 financials.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a couple of things of note, just in case someone else looked it over. There's actually a duplication of accounts. Renee is aware of it. She's taking care of it. I also, on the variance report, you'll notice the M3 hardware is on there, and I asked her to check with M3 about identifying software versus hardware so it can be divvied up correctly in those accounts.
Also, could I, I'd like to ask the staff, accounts that don't have a budgeted amount, that if we're budgeting something against, I'd like to see those added to the variance report from now on. And you know, normally you look at the variance if it's over 8 percent or 15 percent. But if we haven't budgeted anything for it, and we have an expense for it, we'd probably like to see that.
One item you were talking about is probably the PID surcharge account, I believe it was, where there wasn't a budgeted amount.
Right. That was, that was the one that we had two separate, different account numbers. And in one of them, the budget is in one of them, and the other one is where the utility billing PID surcharge is hitting. So I will move, move, since we passed the budget with the other account number, I will be changing the UB account number that it's hitting into the one that was passed with the budget, and that'll show up on the November financials.
The other ones, we usually do amendments to the budget in April, is that correct?
Yes, after the March numbers.
Right, and some of those will kind of smooth out after?
Yeah, we're planning to bring a budget amendment back next month in December because there's several things that, when we get on into the agenda, there's one item, dealing with the Fort Worth water line that we'll want to talk about and a few other things, but we'll be bringing actually our first budget amendment next month.
Sounds good. There's a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Item three, consider and take appropriate action to approve amendment to the agreement for water service between the City of Fort Worth and the Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One for the construction of a Northside 248-inch water main and allocated capacity.
I've asked Lori to pass out supplemental agenda item number three. If you all will open that up, I wanted to go over this real quick. This is the 48-inch water main from Kaler Tank that we're, it's a regional project that we're working with Southlake, Keller, Trophy Club, and Westlake, along with the City of Fort Worth to upgrade that line. And we've been talking about this since really early this year, end of last year to early this year. And the last estimate that we were provided back in March of this year, the, our share was, if you look on the back, our share was estimated to be $638,360. They've actually bid the project now, and with the actual costs, our amount has moved up to $675,076. So I'll kind of talk about that and where we can find the funds. We actually already have some of the funds. But first, I want to go back to the front and just talk a little bit about the schedule. The advertisement for, we're in the second phase of this. The advertisement is going to be anytime, very soon. It was supposed to start mid-November with a construction date in March, to begin in March, and it will end at the end of 2015. And most likely, that is when we will be asked to pay our share of the bill. There could be some change orders as the project moves on. There could be additional easements that have to be obtained. So right now, that's where we're at on a pretty good estimate of what they think our amount will be. Everyone's went up just a little bit. But when we did the budget, we budgeted $650,000. And so the difference in the early, or the March estimate and the current date estimate is $36,716. But with the budgeted amount of $650,000, that means we will need an additional $11,640. There is also another project that I will be bringing, an interlocal agreement with the town of Westlake, back to y'all next month, and it is to do a routing study for the final phase of this project, which will only be, or I should say, the third phase. There is a fourth phase if we want to go it on our own. But, but the next phase would be just between us and Westlake. And so we have drafted an interlocal agreement with them and sent it over. To do the study, each one of our costs will be about $35,000. So my suggestion, and what we will bring back to you all next month in the form of a budget amendment, is we will not do a office lobby remodeling this year, and that will free up some funds for those projects, as well as, we did have the emergency repair on the line for the elevated storage tank. So that's some money that will be freed up to kind of cover those projects. So what we're here tonight to do is to approve the amendment, and there's one additional part of this amendment that I want to point out, and that is ours, everyone, each participant's amendment is exactly the same, except for, of course, your cost share. And ours additionally, if you recall, the last time the contract was executed with Fort Worth, they had included an incorrect map of our service area. That was prior to me coming here. I think it was in 2010 or 2011. And since I've been here, I've been trying to work with them on getting that map amended. And they wanted to wait till we had some other amendment with the contract, and I reminded them that this is now an amendment to the contract. So Exhibit A shows the correct service area for the district, and that will be included in this amendment. So the purpose of the Fort Worth amendment tonight is to approve our participation in the 48-inch water main project and to approve the corrected service area map.
Okay. I have a question. Okay, the amendment, is this the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, in page two, section 2.1. Customer, it says 638,360 at the end, the 4 percent, that equals 638,360. Is that supposed to say that this amount's 675?
Yeah, they will need to update that. I think it goes on to say that there could be other costs. This, this, this contract amendment started floating around about four months ago, long before they bid it out. So I see what you're saying. They must not have updated that. I can talk with Wendy. We will pay at the end when we know exactly what the price is. But our percent is going to remain 4 percent of the additional capacity in the line.
And what's in seven, item seven? It says, "Payments will be due within 30 days from the date, Northside 248." Does that apply to us?
Yes, that's the name of this project. The Northside 248-inch water main is completed. So once the project is completed, which they expect to be the end of 15, they will bill us.
Bill us the, what amount?
Our share. After they do the whole project, and there could be change orders that increase the amount, lower the amount. But right now, our estimate is it's the 675.
Okay, so that won't be due till the 15, 16?
Yes.
Okay.
But we've budgeted this year, so we'll be putting it back monthly, our share of that.
Okay. And when did we get this, this amendment?
This most recent amendment was, I'm going to say, probably about two months ago.
Okay. Just, you know, I have a problem with getting things and asking us to vote on it. So, you know, the same time, like, okay, how many people actually looked at this thing?
Well, it's in your packet, too.
I know, but it, I mean, I know it's in the packet, but if you've had it for two months, and this amount is, no one caught it in two months.
But was it the budget?
The 638 was, but it's revised.
Actually, 650.
Yeah, whatever. I just, okay.
But we're not going to be, you know.
I mean, it's not, it's a year off. I don't have any problem, but.
If you guys are planning to make a motion to approve this, I would suggest an amendment. After the word "Fort Worth," add the words "an amount equal to" and then take out the words "that equals to" 638,360. That means we'll just pay the 4 percent, what that, what amount that ends up being.
Well, I'd prefer to put the amount 675,076. That's the 4 percent, just so in case it goes up again.
Okay.
Well, they're basing the 4 percent on the estimation at the time of 15, 959. So we would have to get them to agree to change that.
But the 4 percent is 4 percent off this price, or 4 percent when it's completed?
When it's completed.
When it's completed.
So that number might, is just the moving target, too?
Yes. That's kind of the point.
Okay, any further discussion?
Is this Exhibit A?
Yes.
It doesn't say Exhibit A on there.
In the, in the agreement, you have the map right behind the exhibit.
Is that what you're supposed to do, go to the next page?
Yes, sir. For this particular agreement, that's the way this one is.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Just one, one quick question. So Jennifer, from the time they did the original estimate to the time they actually said it's done, their cost went up 5.75 percent? I just did the math on, on the 638 versus the 675.
Yes.
So that was across the board. I guess everybody, everybody faced that increase?
Yes, on the, it shows everybody's new amounts back here, but you all don't know what all of their old amounts were. But, but yes, everyone's went up the same amount.
Okay, thanks.
When do you expect, Jennifer, to get an invoice on the 675?
When the project's completed, which will be the end of 2015.
Calendar year or fiscal year?
Calendar.
Calendar year.
They're saying here, construction end date, end of 2015, so I assume that's the calendar year.
Is this considered Amendment 1, then? There's no prior amendment?
Not to the, to the latest contract, no. There's no other amendment.
There's no number on it. I make a motion to approve amendment to the agreement for water services between the City of Fort Worth and Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One for the construction of Northside 248-inch waste or water main and allocated capacity, and also Exhibit A, is that what it is, the service area? And also with the corrections and item two, to reflect the chart for 4 percent. And I think it was 670?
675.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Item four, consider and take appropriate action to approve the district emergency fuel plan. Jennifer?
Director Carr had requested a couple of months ago that I draft a emergency fueling plan when we move to the fleet cards. And this plan reflects what we will do if there is a situation where we are unable to get gas or diesel in our, directly in Trophy Club, how we will work that out. We, I set a team, an emergency response team, where each manager of each department will be responsible for getting the fuel for their department. We did purchase a small diesel trailer that we can go fill up. It's a 250-gallon trailer for diesel fuel. We have to have that anyway to get fuel back to the wastewater treatment plant from the 7-Eleven or wherever we get fuel. So that will be used for diesel, and then each of the plan members are going to keep a 50 gallons of gasoline on hand at all times. The, if you go through the plan, it goes through the responsibilities of all the team members and the employees. And we will, once the policy is adopted and approved, we will have a training session for all the employees.
Discussion.
You are responsible for allocating it? I mean, if a fire chief comes and says, "Hey, I need some for the fire trucks," and then Mike comes and says he needs some for his, who does allocation?
Each department has their own amount of fuel cans, basically. And there to keep the emergency fuel log, where they fill up the cans, and then where they use them for, for the vehicle, there's an emergency fuel log, and those are submitted. So it's the team member for their department that keeps up with the allocation for their specific department.
And who oversees the team members? Do you?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to see who the top dog is.
Do we have any idea which vehicles use the most fuel?
No.
I realize it's a function of how, how much you run them. I suspect the bat-con truck's probably not a good gas mileage vehicle, but we don't run it very often.
Right.
Not any of our fire engines. Fire truck probably is not very.
Yeah, actually, it probably is the generators that use the most diesel fuel.
I make a motion that we approve the Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One Emergency Fueling Plan dated November 18, 2014.
Have a second?
I'll second. Well, I would like to, I was wondering, do you really, do you really need the title? We have the titles in there, water superintendent, wastewater superintendent, fire chief. Do we need to also put the names, because if there's any change in the future, then you'd have to come back and amend? If we just simply put down their titles, and we don't have to, if they, and for the foreseeable future, we probably won't have to come back and amend anything. It's just a thought. Not, I'm not mandatory, I'm just wondering.
It's on page one, under responsibility. That's the only place that we have all, everybody's names. You have Mike's, Carl's, Danny's, and yourself.
Sure, we can remove those.
So who's this, I'm, I'm fine with amending to make those changes?
Okay.
Okay.
Who's the second?
Neil?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? It is unanimous. Item five, consider and take appropriate action to approve Texas Rural Water Emergency Assistance Cooperative Agreement for emergency assistance through Texas Rural Water Association.
I'd like to tell y'all a little bit about this program. It is through, it's similar to the fire department and their mutual aid with, with other departments. But it's only activated in a disaster, an extreme emergency. But just to kind of go through some items of the program, the participation in the, in the program is voluntary and it's completely free. In order to participate, you have to sign a mutual aid agreement and identify the available resources that you can share. And that way, as there, if an emergency occurs somewhere, they have an inventory of equipment that might be available. The types of assistance that they provide are heavy equipment, portable generators, backhoes, supplies like pipes and valves and fittings that, that you could possibly need in an emergency, and even trained personnel, operators, electricians, instrument panel technicians, SCADA specialists, that sort of thing, if there were an extreme emergency. What they try to do is they match equipment and manpower and other resources with the needs during an emergency situation. They, the organization coordinates and manages all the disaster relief efforts for the donor utility and those utilities that need assistance. And that also includes working with local and state and federal agencies if, if it's necessary. They also cover the equipment insurance while it's on loan. If you choose to loan a backhoe, they, their insurance kicks in, and if there's any damage to it, it's covered under the mutual aid agreement. The expenses are not reimbursable. If we were to provide aid to another, another city or district, we would not be reimbursed our costs. But if we... But if we obtained, uh, assistance from another city or district, we would not have to pay either. The only time that there, there can be repayment, and that is if FEMA pays. And if there is going to be FEMA payments, uh, this organization actually does all the paperwork and gets those reimbursements for you. Um, you do need to know that there is absolutely no obligation to participate, even if you join. So if you join and there's a disaster over in South Lake and, um, we don't have the resources to, to participate, we do not have to, even if you're a, a member. The, the purpose of this group is to establish a network of manpower, equipment, and supplies that are available for, for our utility in the event of a disaster or another emergency. And priority is given to small districts that are often the last to receive assistance. And, um, kind of looking on their website, I noted that, um, they have partners in Florida, Oklahoma, and New Mexico who came to the aid of more than one hundred small water systems during Hurricane Rita, providing them with generators, chlorine, bottled water, and food donated by other utilities. They had emergency crews that worked onsite in the disaster and around the clock helping water systems remove debris, fix water leaks, and collect back T-samples. Um, from a personal note, I have, um, used this organization during hur, after Hurricane Ike when I was in Bolivar, and I can tell you that it was, um, it was absolutely unbelievable, the outpouring of help that we received when we needed it. And so being that there's absolutely no obligation, it can only help us and, and could give us a opportunity to help someone else if we, if, um, one of our nearby cities had a disaster, I highly recommend that we join this.
Let me ask you a question. Uh, if the, if our wastewater plant happened to reach capacity and could no longer handle the inflow, uh, and we had pending growth in the town, it would exacerbate that problem. Is that considered an emergency as far as using TRAs concerned?
No, no. It would only be in a disaster type situation.
Well, if the plant overflows, it's kind of a disaster.
It could be, yes. And, and I guess if we got to that point, we might certainly want to ask them, but we would have to get some piping up there, so.
Further discussion?
Where did this, uh, agreement come from? Is it just like a template they sent us?
Yes, from their website.
They need to do a spell check on it. I mean, I just did my Evelyn Wood speed reading course on it and, uh, it looks like B-one or B-two, excuse me, has providing, pro and then hyphen providing. And then al, also has some things in it that don't make sense as far as the way it reads. Uh, one of them was, uh, damaged, uh, let's see, uh, have a licensed electrician available at it at the time a generator is delivered to hook up. The generator, if this condition is not net, instead of met, the generator will be taken to another damaged utility. TWRA slash RWEAC will not connect. It should have a period in there somewhere, but, um, someone needs to, you know, do a spell check and grammar check on this thing.
Jennifer, can we, uh, if, if it's so desired, approve this, uh, with the condition that the spelling be corrected in the document? Do we have to wait?
Uh, no, you can certainly do that.
Also, I have a question about the liability. I, I see Article, uh, nine, I guess it is, on if we loan them out our generator, they, we deliver it to a site or that, you know, they pay for delivery and something blows up. Who, whose insurance pays for that or how's that covered? And then if our, uh, I noticed that, I think in one of these articles, it says we will provide a list of all the, uh, qualifications of our staff. I think that's B-one. And if our staff goes to, you know, Bolivar or wherever and they cause damage, are we, are, are they going to come back for liability against us because our employees damaged their equipment or someone's equipment?
The equipment is covered under the TRWA's insurance when you put it on loan.
Okay. So what about the personnel exposure?
Um, I don't know on the personnel. It doesn't, it didn't say that. I would imagine that they're still under your workman's comp. They're still your employees.
Danny, just out of curiosity, has, when you send fire crews somewhere, is there any liability exposure?
They're covered under the town's lib, uh, the town or the muds', uh, workman's comp.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Anybody wish to make a motion?
Well, yeah, I do want to ask Chris. Would you ever loan a, a piece of equipment without our operator running it?
I'm sorry?
The, part of this is, is I understand it. It's, it's kind of a, a mutual aid agreement. Uh, if a town doesn't have a, a particular, uh, just, let's just use the, the purpose of a discussion, the VACCON truck as an example. There's some kind of major emergency and, and something explodes and or it gets corrupted and we need to send that truck out. Would we ever allow some other entity to operate our equipment or will our equipment always be operated by our people?
That would be up to y'all at the time. We would, I would have to bring it to you all to decide if we're going to send someone to help or send a piece of equipment. And at that time, you would decide if you wanted to just send the equipment or if you wanted to send personnel as well.
Well, Jennifer, I like the idea. I don't like the idea of someone else utilizing our equipment. I mean, we've had, we've had, uh, a, a problem, you know, once before with the, with the backhoe, where the contractor for the town, you know, kind of messed it up and, uh, you know, it was kind of hard to... Well, it, it got to be nastier than it should have been.
I agree. I don't, I totally agree. I don't really like other people to use the equipment, unless at least I know that they're highly qualified to do so, so.
Well, I just bring that up. I mean, I like the idea, but I, I would like for the board to think in terms of if something goes out, it goes out with our people and not just hold on to somebody else to use.
I think we would specify that, uh, I believe at the time. Is that what you said?
Yes, we wouldn't, um, we wouldn't agree to, I would not agree to participate. It would have to be brought to the board at that, at, if we wanted to assist another utility. These are, it's meant more for large types of disasters that it's going to take, um, a long time to do repairs.
I make a motion that we approve the Texas Rural, uh, Water Emergency Assistance Cooperative Agreement for emergency assistance through Texas Rural Water Association.
With the caveat for the corrections?
Spelling and grammar changes.
I'd second it.
Uh, Director Thomas seconded. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Consider and take appropriate action regarding GAZB fifty-four's designations for fiscal year twenty fifteen. Is this you, Jennifer?
That's Renee.
Okay, um, I believe this is on page, the, um, spreadsheet is on page one twenty-one in the packet. And each year, our auditors require us to, um, go through our capital outlays and determine the designations in GAZB, whether it's committed, assigned, non-spendable is like prepaid's. So this spreadsheet is, is what we are designating this year for our budget. And Neil, the six hundred and fifty thousand is in there?
Yep.
Okay. Um, so basically, what we do is pull this out of unallocated fund balance and put it in a fund balance that says assigned. And that ties that money, that's saying this money is restricted. And, um, if for some reason we decide we are not going to do one of these projects, we can pull it out of a sign and put it back in unallocated. So along the way through the year. At the end of the year, we clear it out and we start all over again. So each fund, um, is listed that we have a sign, a signed, um, fund balance. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, the, the Fund one thirty-five, in general fund, is there actually a journal entry made when you put things like that, six hundred and fifty thousand and all the rest of them? Do you make a journal entry for that?
I, I use, um, unallocated fund balance and, and assigned fund balance. So I move it from one to the other. I don't hit the...
So the un...
Accounts or anything.
The unallocated fund balance, uh, is a asset, is it not?
No, it's an equity, fund equity. That's how much, that's how much money you have available.
Equity account, so you, you, which normally carries a credit balance.
Right.
So you would debit it out of the unallocated fund...
Right.
And credit it into an assigned...
Assigned, yes. That's all I'm doing is moving it from one fund balance to the other.
Now, what happens to this thirty-five percent that we try to attain?
We will talk about that when we, I guess, when we get to that in the agenda.
Is that on the agenda?
Uh, the fund balance report is, is in there. Um, I mean, I guess if you want to move on to that or, you know, we can now.
Well, I can wait till it comes around.
Okay.
The, everything was, uh, done on Indian Creek project in the last fiscal year, is that correct?
No, there's still a small piece left.
Okay, do you, if I don't see it?
The majority of... It's in the Fund five oh seven.
Okay, so the Indian Creek and Meadowbrook are combined, so we still, I know we still have Meadowbrook.
Yeah, that's all one, yeah.
Okay, so there's ten thousand two sixty-eight.
There's ten thousand dollars left.
On the, um, GAZB one thirty-seven...
Right.
Where replacement water?
Yes. We put thirty thousand each year. Last year, we moved that out and used it on this, uh, Indian Creek project, but now we're starting to build it, build it up again.
So water being...
Anything in water, any kind of replacement. Um, the, we're starting to set aside the forty-five thousand for the town's elevated tank, uh, for whenever that's going to start requiring some, uh, work on it. The, um, IT replacement, um, we moved money out of that into the operating fund for computer replacement. And the fire truck, we moved a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out of that for, towards the down payment, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar down payment on the fire truck.
Okay, so the forty-three is going in there for the...
Forty-three is like twenty-five thousand and some odd leftover last, you know, last year. And then we put a nineteen, nineteen-five or something like that back in this year. All the, all the transfers for GAZB have been completed for the year.
The, the town elevated tank, I mean, there's probably some plans on that. Obviously, the town owns the tank. We service it through an agreement, correct?
Right.
Is there anything in the GAZB, uh, I guess terminology that says we have to own that asset or...
Not that I'm aware of.
Now, what happens, Jennifer, to the hundred thousand that's, uh, sitting there for, uh, raw, front office remodeling? You indicate you're going to use that for something else?
Uh, well, right now, it stays there, but yes, I'm going to bring that back to y'all next month for a budget amendment. And then we will reallocate it in the GAZB fifty-four as well.
Any further discussion?
Just a question. Will you say, bring it back for, i- is it, you're not going to use it or you're going to...
We're going to reallocate it for some other projects.
Okay.
Part of it was on that water line.
What, what is it, uh, you're seeking from us under item six? Consider and take appropriate action. What kind of action are you looking for?
To approve the designations as presented so that we can present it to the auditor.
Yes, the, the auditor requires that you act on it, accept it.
You need a motion for us?
Yes.
Okay. I, I make a motion that we, uh, approve the designations, uh, shown on, what's this page?
Page one twenty-one.
Page one, page one twenty-one. Uh, designation of GAZB fifty-four for presentation to the auditors.
For fiscal year twenty fifteen.
Fiscal year two thousand fifteen.
You know, you broke my string of motions. I was going for, yeah, thanks.
I know you like to monopolize.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
Jennifer, uh, if you're going to move those funds, please tell me you still have money to fix these chairs?
The chairs are on order.
The chairs were ordered and, um, the original date to be delivered was November the twentieth. Um, we couldn't order them until after the first of the fiscal year, after October first. So we did, I think, October second, I ordered them. Um, I called them last week just to kind of follow up and it was a long story about the chairs being delivered on the wrong train to Santa Monica. But I'm going to check back with them again. I wasn't, I was actually going to wait till the twentieth to check with them. So I'll call them again next week. They were on back order. I knew that when we ordered them, they were on back order.
You're just replacing them instead of repairing them?
Yes, we're just replacing all of those.
And that has nothing to do with this hundred thousand dollars?
No.
Thank you. I just did not want them, these things not to get fixed.
They should be, I'm hoping that we have the new chairs in here by the December meeting.
Terrific.
Any further discussion?
I have one other question. Uh, when they, when the auditors make closing entries, the closing entries, however many there are, for the fiscal year ending in two, two zero one four, uh, do they make a closing entry as regards this GAZB fifty-four?
No, the auditors, their goal is to not have to make any entries. They expect us to have them all done.
They do expect you to now?
Yes.
The actual results report that came out for September twenty fourteen, I assume until the auditors go through the closing, or you go through the closing entries, whoever's going to make them, uh, that we don't have the final numbers for September twenty fourteen as far as results reports are concerned. Is that true?
That, that is correct. Um, they will be coming out Monday. Uh, I will be cutting off where absolutely nothing else will be added, uh, probably on Friday because they want advance, uh, general ledger accounts and things that we will send to them on Friday before they get here. They don't like to add anything, especially if it's not material. And, um, so we do our best that we don't have anything. And I think we're far enough. Actually, I added something today, uh, in last, where the town had not billed, billed us the electricity for our share of this building for, excuse me, for September twelfth through October thirteenth. So I had to split that up. I added that back, back into September. So there have been a lot of entries made since the September financials went out in the packet.
There are no further discussion. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Item seven, consider and take appropriate action regarding annexation matters. A, approve petition for annexation of approximately four point five one six one acres of land situated in the J. Henry survey, abstract number five twenty-nine, Town of Trophy Club, Denton County, Texas, as submitted by SAVI Management Company. Item B, consider adoption of order number twenty fourteen dash one 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 eight to approve annexation of approximately four point five one six one acres of land situated in the J. Henry survey, abstract number five twenty-nine, Town of Trophy Club, Denton County, Texas, as submitted by the SAVI Management Company.
Question. Is this the property right behind the church?
Yes, behind the LDS church.
It's the Montessori's school property.
And can we make a motion on both these at the same time or do they have to be individual?
I'd rather them be separate.
Then I'd like to make a motion that we approve item A as stipulated and stated.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. If there's no discussion, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous.
Like, I'd like a motion, like to make a motion that we approve item B as stipulated in the...
I'll second that too.
Seconded by Director Carr, made in second. No discussion. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Next item, reports and updates. Next item, reports and updates. Eight, general manager report. Jennifer?
Okay, um, well, let me just start with if you all have any questions on the manager's report. Um, the only really exciting thing I guess to point out this month is we do have a new water superintendent. And along with new water superintendents comes new monthly water reports. And so he, he's kind of modified it up to, to be his own. And so, um, just different stylistically, but, um, any questions about the water or the wastewater reports? And the only other really thing to add this month, um, we are planning to close the office for a half a day on December the 19th for the office party.
Jennifer, what's the status on IT?
Um, they're making very good progress. The migration is going very well. We should be well ahead of time. I would say by mid-December, we should be completely migrated over. Kind of one of the difficult pieces is coordinating with STW. That, first of all, the migration for that has to occur on the weekend so that we can continue working during the week. And, um, as of today, they were going back and forth. It looks like it could be December the 6th that they're going to start that process. So, um, so it's going very well.
Is the off-site backup, does that happen once a day or on a continuous basis throughout?
Every 15 minutes.
Director Carr?
I just want to hear Mike say something. So, uh, can you give us a summary of the breaks we had, the saddle that broke? And also there was a, a resident I saw on, I don't know if it was a town blog or something, complaining about a smell off Troon at the end.
Yes, uh, me and Carl actually went over there today. We popped a manhole down there because that's the only place that we figured the smell would be coming from. We took a gas detector over there. The readings came back, you know, very low. Nothing was out of range.
You all were supposed to get me that work order today.
The saddle on Panorama Court, it started out as just a small leak. We thought it was maybe just a service line or something because we had been back over there and repaired a saddle over there previously in the last few years. But it was the saddle actually going across the street. It was just up from the one we repaired last time we were over there. So we ended up going ahead and digging that up and making the repair on that also.
So Burt went down in the hole?
Probably.
Director Thomas?
Mike, I just want to say to you, uh, Jennifer had several really good candidates to, to look at. And I just wanted to congratulate you on, on her choosing you as being the top of that list because there was some good people there. Secondly is, I have, I've just kind of watched the past few days and I really, really appreciate, you're coming in and starting to put your stamp on things because new ideas are great. You know, having a new person in sees things differently, does things differently. So I really want to compliment you for that. But the biggest compliment I want to share with you is, and I haven't been seeking this out, it's just been volunteered to me. Your peers and staff have just had the nicest things to say about you and your role. And I just want to compliment you for that. And please don't, don't stop.
Thank you. I think the biggest thing is there is I work with real good staff, so it makes my job a little bit easier.
Just the board you have problems with, right?
Jennifer, anything else?
No, that's all I have unless you all have any other questions.
Any other questions for Jennifer on, uh, general manager's report?
Just the website analytics, analytics, the returning visitor, new visitor? It's kind of interesting. I mean, you're more, more new visitors than returning. I was just curious if we had any, give any thought to what's driving that?
Probably water line breaks.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, it's a fair number.
That would be my guess.
But it's a fair number of, I mean, it's not like one or two people. It's a whole bunch of, of reviews out there.
And actually, we've had, um, you know, uh, Chris, I hear Kristen a lot talking to people, telling them they can pay their bills online. So that could be a part of it. She could be kind of selling people to go to the website to pay their bill online, so.
So if they paid their bill online two months in a row, they would be returning?
Right. The first month, they'd be a new visitor and then the second month, they'd be returning.
Okay. Curious to see what next month will look like.
Fire department report. Chief Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Um, I'm like Jennifer, uh, looking at the report. If you have any questions, most of the stuff that we, uh, were covering on this month, we covered it at our last meeting as far as October being, uh, a real busy month as far as fire prevention. It's fire prevention month and we deal with our public education and most of our calls are, are the service calls per se. No major events in town as far as fires or accidents or anything like that. We had five fire calls, so nothing serious.
Any questions for the chief?
Danny, uh, on the five fire calls, they were mutual aid?
Uh, one of it was mutual aid and that was my longest call and it was a vehicle fire, um, to Roanoke for an hour and 14 minutes. And it was a 32-foot, uh, um, gooseneck, um, travel trailer at a, at a, at a gas station.
Is that NASCAR weekend?
Uh, it was that air show, um, weekend.
And what were the times on the other four calls, the duration?
Uh, we had a brush fire at 41 minutes. Uh, we had a power line fire, uh, which was a squirrel that shouldn't been where it should have been. And Friday, many fell down the grass, caught the grass on fire. So that's 22 minutes. Uh, we had electrical fire in a house, which was 43 minutes. And then we had a hazmat call at the hospital for an hour.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. It's not for Danny. It's a general question report. Renee, uh, I was trying to, to, to figure out from the Pid report, I realized we just started a brand new year. Do we have any, um, uh, filings in the month of October?
We had nine, we had nine Pid homes, um, in, in October. So we're down, we have 119 left.
Terrific.
Jim, I would like to give a truck report, just a brief overview. We've been assigned a number, uh, from Pierce on our, on the truck. It's, uh, it has a place in line on the, uh, assembly. Um, so we'll probably get a, a work schedule, probably the first of the year after the, uh, holiday break. They take a, a 30% reduction in, uh, manufacturing in December. So, uh, we'll make the line in probably January. And our first visit will be probably be mid-January for pre-construction.
Where is the plan at?
Uh, Appleton, Wisconsin. Kind of hard to get there now, but we'll see how January is.
It's going to be worse.
Danny, I, I, just one quick question for you. This is just curiosity. I saw where you helped three people break back into their cars. How, how many times in a month do people lock themselves out here?
We probably get, um, three or four calls a week.
A week?
That's a really a good service that the fire department does with the community. I mean, it's, um, it's, it's a good thing.
Oh, I agree.
All over the place, uh, the school, the Tom Thumb area, um, residents at home, it, you know, just, we did have an interesting, uh, a car in a house call last night, uh, about 9:30. So we spent a couple hours pulling a car out of a house and.
Is that the picture you were showing me earlier?
And checking to make sure there wasn't any hazards and stuff like that. So he put his foot on the brake and slipped off and hit the accelerator and ended up in the kitchen. So his wife was wanting a remodel and that's what she's going to get.
But she's certainly, she's certainly going to get one.
Okay, if there are no further questions, we'll move into a closed session.
But before we do that, President Moss, we need to revisit item 7B. I just noticed that in the order, it identifies, it's just a typo. It identifies, uh, Trophy Club Municipal Utility District number 11. There's just an extra one. So I'd like for there to be an amendment. Uh, Jim Thom, Jim Thomas made that motion. Kevin Carr seconded. I'd like for there to be a new motion that they, that be changed to, uh, mud number one.
I'd be willing to move that.
Okay.
I, I agree.
Okay, on the amendments?
That's A and B, Jim?
Yeah, A and B.
Well, no, it's, the error is only in B in the order on page 131.
Good catch, Pam.
Okay, we have an amendment in a second. Uh, all those in favor? Uh, it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, Pam, we are going to move into the closed session now. The time is 7:00 PM. Would you like to read this?
Yes, sir. The board will conduct a closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code annotated, Chapter 551, Subchapter D for the following. Item number 10, pursuant to Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code regarding personnel matters, to deliberate a complaint against General Manager Jennifer McKnight submitted by Charles Perry. Item number 11, Section 551.0712, consultation with attorney. Consultation with attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflict with the Open Meetings Act and to seek advice of counsel on legal matters involving pending or contemplated litigation, settlement offers, or legal matters not related directly to litigation or settlement. A, the water line relocation, including security and protection of line. B, agreement regarding relocation of utility infrastructure improvements, Solana, with McGuire Partners, Solana Land LP. C, temporary restraining order and temporary and permanent injunction proceedings in Tarrant County District Court.
Okay, we will now convene in closed session. Seven o'clock.
That's interesting. This report has.
Convene into our regular session at 7:56. Item 12, consider and take appropriate action regarding closed session items.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, uh, regarding, I guess, item 10 in the closed session, to deny the allegation submitted by Charles Perry in his correspondence and take no action regarding his complaint.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No discussion. All those in favor? It is unanimous.
Okay. Also, Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion, uh, regarding 11 on our agenda. Direct our legal, uh, to submit the proposed agreement, uh, to the McGuire Partnerships dash Solana Land LP.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion seconded by Director Thomas. There's no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Items 13, items for future agenda. Do we have any items for future agenda?
I have one. Um, I'd like to, this board to direct the general manager to adopt or create a policy that we could possibly adopt regarding, um, citizen presentations or any electronic thumb drives that come up to make sure that they're, uh, secure and they aren't, uh, you know, uh, creating a virus on our system. And also for it to be set up so when the presentation time comes, you know, it's ready. I also would like, uh, to see something about the audit committee. It's coming up and we need to select a audit committee.
Any other items for future agenda? Of course, we know we can always add these later as we need to, um, set the next meeting dates. We have scheduled a special session December the 4th at 4:00 PM. Our, our regular meeting, December the 16th at 6:00 PM. Does anybody have a problem with those dates? Okay, those will be our next meeting dates. If there's no other official business, it, we will now adjourn at 7:58.